I'll order the President and Board of Trustees, roll call.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Wajowski.
Here.
Trustee Bonucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. If we could rise for the pledge.
(inaudible).
This would be the time for public comments. If there's any public comments, come to the podium and state your name for the record. No public comments, then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
Promoted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is emergency repair. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize Inglewood Electric Rockwell Automation, the area factory authorized representative, to complete the emergency replacement of an Allen Bradley Power Flex 755 variable frequency drive unit and related equipment at the Lake Michigan Water Pumping Station at a quoted cost of forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars.
Just really briefly, at the Lake Water Station, we actually have seven pumps. We have seven VFDs that actually drive each one of the pumps. Basically, what the VFD does is that it allows the pump to run at a faster or slower speed, so that improves efficiency in operations, but it also saves the village a tremendous amount of money in electricity. And these units that really last for somewhere between ten to fifteen to twenty years, depending on their use and the size of the unit, save the village literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in electricity. But, as you know, the station is twelve years old, and the VFDs are twelve years old as well, we did lose one of the VFDs. Now, if you take a look at the picture, just to give perspective, and this is as much for the public, and I'll keep this very brief, inside the station, it's a little deceiving from the outside, it's actually very large on the inside, since there's a depressed floor, where that level is depressed approximately nine feet. From floor to ceiling is a little over twenty feet, and way in the back of the larger picture, where you see the piping and the pumps, are the seven cabinets, and they're actually in pairs, so there are fourteen cabinets that sit back there. On the right-hand side, you'll see there's a picture of one of the engineers, Robert from Rockwell Automation Electrical Engineer, analyzing the drive unit, and you can see those large capacitors that are down near his knees in that area. He's approximately six foot tall, and you can see that cabinet is about eight feet tall in that range. In the center picture is the drive that's failed, and we know that it's failed because not only is it not operating, but it shows signs that it did have at least a significant electrical fire internally in the drive unit. The drive unit is composed of some bigger hardware to carry some high voltage electricity, as well as some circuit boards in there that control the unit. So, it's a complex unit and a complex drive, but at the end of the day, when everything works well, it saves the village a lot of money in electricity, and it helps with operations too as well. When we approached this, there are a couple of different ways to look at it. One, the replacement of the drive with an exact replacement. They no longer make this drive. It's similar to computers, after about four or five years, things change, maybe not that similar to computers, but after four or five years, manufacturing changes, things get updated, and a replacement drive is not available, so that was not an option. The second option would be to put in a brand-new drive and hope for the best, and the problem is, is we don't know exactly what caused the failure of this existing drive. So, a new drive unit is about thirty thousand dollars, and to take the thirty thousand dollar gamble and install it was not a wise, we felt like a wise decision. So, when we talked to the electrical engineers at Rockwell Automation, we believed that the best thing to do would be to send both of those eight-foot-tall electrical panels back to the factory, which is actually in Elmhurst, where they would test all the components within the cabinet, replace any of the components that could be failing or have failed, and then replace it with a brand-new drive unit too as well. So, that's what's included within this proposal. Staff supports this proposal, and once the cabinets are returned, this also includes the integration of the new communication system to make the drive work, and it includes a startup and includes a warranty too as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions related to that, but hopefully I didn't, I gave enough detail without getting too far into the science behind it too as well.
Is this the first one that's failed?
We had one that failed earlier, but it was directly related to a power surge, and we were able to actually come up with some replacement parts, so the cost was lower to do that. But now that this drive is no longer available, the only option is to purchase a new drive.
So, it's a variable drive that failed, not the pump that failed. I remember an incident where we replaced something, but it was the drive that we replaced or repaired at that point.
Yeah, we were actually, we were able to send the drive back to the factory, and they were able to find a replacement part for that drive, and it was reinstalled. But, that's back when the equipment was a lot newer, and we knew exactly what the problem was related to the failure.
Yeah, I think your proposal makes good sense. Let me just make sure I understand what you just said in terms of the repairs. There's a variable cost thing at the end, which is installation, they're charged us by the hours, but they will do all the repairs that are necessary on the cabinets and give us a new drive for the basic amount other than the installation. No matter how extensive they are, it's a fixed price.
Yes, there's a fixed price for the replacement of the drive and the work within the cabinet. The variable price is for the integration and the testing too as well. If, you know, at the factory, they're actually gonna hook this unit up to power it up, connect it to a computer, and then hook it up to a motor and run it for a period of time to make sure that it's gonna operate once it gets back here. If there's additional time that takes for the integration when it comes back, there could be some additional costs, but we, you know, we feel pretty confident that we're pretty close to the numbers here on this one.
One of the things I noticed, that we had a record water usage one day, without one pump, how comfortable are you that we will float through the rest of the summer?
Well, we're fine at this point, you know, July and August are usually our record-high days, just so the public's aware, June was our second highest June on record. It's our highest June in the past five years, you know, we're looking at some hot, dry weather. We do have some options in emergency operations to make it work too as well. I think the concern is, is that, you know, if we lose another drive, then we're really gonna be in a pickle, and these things take a couple of weeks, two to, you know, four or five weeks to really turn around. So, we're hoping actually to have, and I know they mentioned about six weeks in the timeframe here, but we've been informed by the factory that they could turn this around as quickly as two weeks, and that's what we're anticipating.
Sounds good. It's a fully supported, well-thought-out program, I'm just curious about some of the details.
Are there any other comments or questions? That would be seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize Inglewood Electric Rockwell Automation to complete the emergency replacement of an Allen Bradley Power Flex 755 variable frequency drive and related equipment at the Lake Michigan Water Pumping Station at a quoted cost of forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Promoted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Seeking motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Promoted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the special meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.
I'll call to order the committee of the whole with a roll call, please.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rassich?
Here.
Trustee Wajowski?
Here.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on June thirteenth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Presidential comments?
Just one, I see in the minutes from the last workshop, Trustee Bonucci asked for a moment of silence for the Orlando shooting victims, and I would go ahead and say I'm terribly sorry for those officers and family from Dallas, so a moment of silence for those people. Thank you very much. It's a terrible situation around our country right now, and I certainly hope that people of wisdom engage same. Yes.
Trustees' comments?
Picking back on the mayor's thoughts, it's a tough week for anybody involved in law enforcement, but I would like the public to know, as a member of the law enforcement community, you have a very progressive chief who believes strongly in training and keeping his people up to date. It's known throughout the law enforcement community, at least in the county. I can't speak for outside the county, but I can't speak for those officers inside the county, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I have a couple of comments, I guess, around the tragic events in Dallas last week. I guess there are many things to say. I think it's important that we stand together and support not only our local police officers, but all the officers serving and protecting the residents. You know, knowing that they put themselves in harm's way to protect us every day is, for me, it's a great feeling. I'm not an officer, I know some officers, one of my family members is an officer, so God bless all of you. Second comment that I have to make is regarding more business stuff, and that's the, there's a couple of emails I received over the last couple of weeks, and residents were asking about more or less an update on the posting of the agendas online, so I know that that's been a topic in the past. I thought we were heading towards that direction, and I don't know if there's a timeline that anybody can maybe update as to when we would hope to see some of that moving forward. Need the agenda packet, yes.
Right, the agenda packet, the agenda online, this is something that's still in process that we're working toward, yeah.
Do we have any estimated time on it?
I don't know that I have an estimated timeline as yet. There are a couple of questions, obviously, the first was, if you recall, we purchased the additional needed laser fiche licenses, I had to think about the proper word there, and that's in place, so that helps out quite a bit. We do want as well, we've been working on a couple of different ideas internally, some of our packets are very big, and so some company, some towns have it where you can click on the individual item, and you can pull up that specific information on just that item, so that you don't have to go through the myriad of information and pages that are related to that, and so we've been exploring some different options on how best to make that come together. So, I don't know that I have a timeline yet, but it is something that is being worked on by IT, and I'll be sure to pass along.
Thank you. Along, I guess, continuing along that thought, you know, with the timeline and those things, is there, I guess, is it unreasonable to think about maybe having some kind of a working document that talks about the different items that are being worked on or being considered? Kind of, you know, kind of as we do it in the private sector, it's kind of a progress report, you know, whether it's every two weeks for, once a week for, once a meeting every two weeks for a phone call, and kind of go through the list, okay, where's this, any progress on this, where's this one, no, where this one's later, where's this one, still being worked on. So, you kind of get an idea of some of the more important items, or the depth of what you and staff are working on, and we can kind of see the progress as it progresses.
Yeah, we pretty much use the strategic plan update as that model, but I think what you're asking for perhaps a little bit more level of detail than what we're providing in the strategic plan update, as we've had it set up in the past. We have been working on a new layout for that strategic plan update that we do regularly, and I'm pretty certain that next week, we should be out with that next iteration of that plan, and I'm hesitant in saying that, but I'm hopeful that it's next week, because I'm gone next week, which means we have to get it wrapped up this week, so my hope is that we get that out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if I understand that correctly, I guess what I was, I know you guys are working on different things all the time, and there are certain things that show up on different agendas, and obviously you know it before it's coming up, and you might know stuff that's gonna be on two agendas. We don't know what's going on as far as, you know, before we get the Thursday packet a lot of times, so that's kind of what I was looking for, more like, okay, these are coming up in the next six, eight weeks, you know, what's the progress? Oh, that one you're probably not gonna see for past the next eight weeks, or, you know, just so we can kind of get an idea, because I think unfortunately, sometimes people feel like things get mentioned, and then they just kind of get forgotten about. And then if that way, if we know they're on a list, okay, where is it at? Okay, this one's moving, nope, this one got pushed in front of it, it's just, I don't know how the other trustees feel about that, I, but.
Let me just register a comment, I've dealt in the public-private sector, if you will, for quite a while in management, and that's an awful lot of extra work. When I first started out with DuPont, we wrote monthly reports, and I was in research. Two days out of every month was spent writing the report, which got filed away, they knew what was going on, but it was never really useful. We lost two days of work because of that. So, I think you need to be a little bit careful about adding to the workload and not making it productive. You do, you are aware, of course, that the board gets a weekly report. It's not a public report, it's confidential, but at least you and the rest of the board is understanding a lot of the things are in the works.
But it's, right, but I would say that maybe sometimes that report touches on different topics. It's not kind of like a flowing topic of what, okay, this, that, you know, and I'm guessing if somebody's working on it somewhere, it's part of a report somewhere already, that's, otherwise, how do people keep track of what?
I don't think so. Things are in the works, but are they in report form? I doubt it.
I mean, I'm just talking about a general overview of like-
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, if you have that, what's gonna be improved? Why will things be better? Because you're taking time away to make a report. Writing reports takes a lot of time. Not everybody's really adept at report writing. So, if you have that, and not doing, pushing things forward, there may be more important things to do than preparing a report. If the report made a difference someplace, it'd be one thing.
And maybe report's a bad word, maybe it's more of a list.
Well, I'm sure there is a list, an ongoing list of things that have been requested. Again, at least I'm reluctant to add additional work. We have, we reduced our staff by, what, forty people from where we were?
Forty-two.
I was honored, we had a lot of people, and you could do that. You know, when you reduce and get everybody, you know, working as hard as they can to put an extra load on them, I'm not sure is productive, from my experience.
It wasn't the intent to add any work, I just figured, somebody's got a list out there that people are working off of, working towards finalizing every week, every month, every quarter, and alls I was saying is, I don't know that we're privy to that, it'd be kind of nice to see what are the items that are coming up, what are the items being progressed in that pipeline per se, that's all.
I think a lot of, trustee, I think a lot of the information you're requesting is in the report by the administrator. It's every Friday, and he keeps us apprised of everything that went on, and then future meetings that are set up by staff. So, I mean, the public is not aware of what's going on, because a lot of it's confidential, so, but he includes a lot of information in that, his Friday report, so, I mean, it keeps all the trustees and staff apprised of, you know, who met with who, what came about, and such like this, so, I'm not sure if that's really what you need, but that is quite a document that he puts out every Friday.
I was gonna ask you, are you looking more for, just like the topics like you just asked now about the agenda thing, something like that, like where it's at, where it's at in the mix somewhere? So, when you bring up something, you ask a question about something, where does it fall on, like where is it at? Okay, I mentioned it today, or I mentioned it two weeks ago, where is it at? Is that, that's kind of where you're going?
Somebody's working on it, it's on somebody's list somewhere, and I just, you know, and I know that report comes out and it's very detailed a lot of times, but it hits on different things. It's not a consistent, okay, this one came off the list because we completed it, this one got added to the list, sometimes it's really just about really what happened in the last week or two, as opposed to these are the items that are being addressed, that's all.
My position, I wouldn't want to put staff in a situation that trustee Lamb explained, where it would be an extensive report of every single item that's progressing. If there were particular items that a trustee is requesting and would like to see some sort of a flow chart, an Excel spreadsheet with eight or nine items on it, that's something that takes about three or four minutes to put together, I do them myself all the time, that I wouldn't be opposed to, but I definitely wouldn't want to see large intricate reports put together that trustee Lamb had explained he would be objected to. So, I mean, and with that, I'll follow into my question, was I also wanted to check in and see if we could put together some sort of a timeline, I had requested the information from staff, what it would take for us to find out if we can put our checkbook online, similar to how the Will County Auditor has online, so residents can go to our website, they can see our checks versus filling FOIAs out and burning the clerk with those types of FOIAs. Word of mouth is that the Will County Auditor site was pretty easy to put together with the infrastructure through, you know, their technology and their server, but then again, I didn't personally roll it out, so I'm not gonna speak to, you know, as to somebody that's actually done that, so that's, and again, that's not something I need tonight, but we can find out in the next, like, three months or so, if that's a reasonable timeline, I'd like to find out if we could do that.
Are there any other trustee comments? If not, this would be the time for public comments. There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is Norman Town Trail.
Thank you very much. We have a presentation tonight regarding the proposed extension of the Norman Town Trail. We've had the pleasure of working with representatives from the Forest Preserve with regard to this question, and Ralph is here, actually, from the Forest Preserve, to kind of give an overview of the overall plan for pathway network, and then get into the specifics on this particular trail. We aren't very far along in it, but it was a very appropriate and timely moment to bring him in and introduce the project.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, mayor and trustees, for allowing me an opportunity to come here tonight and speak to you, giving me time on your agenda. My name is Ralph Schultz, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Forest Preserve District of Will County. I don't know how much you know about the Forest Preserve District, so I'll kind of give it to you in about one minute. The Forest Preserve District is a separate governing body beside the county, we are coterminous with the county. Our Board of Commissioners is made up from your county board members, they are the same individuals, however, the county executive does not have any role at the Forest Preserve District. We manage about twenty-two thousand acres across the county, a hundred and twenty-five miles of trails. We have fifty open access areas and about eighty separate preserves. We stretch, obviously, from Naperville Plainfield area in the upper part of the county down to Braidwood, and out east to Beecher and to Crete. So, we cover a lot of ground, we have about a hundred and ten full-time employees and about a dozen part-time employees, and fill ourselves up with some seasonals in the summertime to get the grass cut and take care of things. So, that's Forest Preserve in a nutshell. What I did want to talk to you tonight about was the Norman Town Trail, and I have three slides here, and there's, the three slides are also paper maps that were handed out to you as well. I wanted to start this discussion, though, in more of a county context, and even a Chicago metro context. The County of Will is currently putting together their 2040 transportation plan. As part of that, the Forest Preserve District launched an effort in partnership with a lot of other local municipalities and park districts to create a Will County Bike Way Plan. Since the time that we've agreed to create the Bike Way Plan and the county started their transportation plan, the two plans have come together, so that the Bike Way Plan will actually be a component of the transportation plan, a separate document that we can use aside from that, but then also one which is incorporated into the overall transportation network of the county. This is an early draft, actually not an early draft, it's the latest draft, of the County Bike Way Corridor Plan, and it looks like there's a, you know, a lot of different colored worms running all over the screen, and I understand that, and there's numbers and different things. This map was actually produced following public comment, as well as comments from our local park districts, municipalities, that provided us input through an advisory committee. So, those public workshops were held in concert with the county across the county over the course of the last twelve to eighteen months. The plan itself is moving towards adoption, it's being finalized now. We expect the Bike Way Plan to move forward to our Board of Commissioners in October of this year, and the county transportation plan to move forward to the county board in November. So, what this map shows you is a series of corridors crisscrossing the county and connecting to the counties around us. They are bike way corridors, they're not all necessarily, when we think of bike way corridors, we're thinking of how to move people between places, connecting communities, and connecting people to the other people around them in the region. So, when we think of bicycle paths, that's certainly a component, but side paths in lieu of sidewalks, as well as on-street accommodations are also part of the corridor study. The corridor study stops at about this scale, there are five, a total of five of these corridors across the county that will be studied further as part of the transportation plan. The County of Will will study one, and the Forest Preserve District will study an additional four, and there will be some very specific recommendations that come out of those additional studies, as far as what cross-section the trail should take, what the bike way corridor should look like, and you'll see that many of the corridors follow existing corridors, like the DuPage River, or the Old Plank Road Trail, or the I&amp;M Canal, and several of them also follow traditional transportation corridors, like Weber Road, or Willington-Piaton Road on the south end of the county. So, we're looking at transportation in a holistic way, we look at those transportation corridors and utility corridors, the same things that connect us already, is providing those connections for bicyclists and pedestrians. What I wanted to bring to your attention on this map in particular is corridor number four, which is located up in the upper left-hand corner of your map. Corridor number four includes the Norman Town Trail. It's a trail segment that we actually refer to as the Aurora to Orland Trail, and/or corridor, and it would be a bike way corridor stitched together from existing bike, the existing bike way networks, or planned bike way networks in municipalities, park districts, forest preserve districts, and other county planning agencies. So, as we start to move through the rest of this discussion tonight, understand that this trail component is part of a larger picture and part of a larger scheme. The Norman Town Trail actually provides a pretty vital link on the western side of the county, linking the Tall Grass Greenway, the Virgil Gilman Trail System, and ultimately the Fox River and the DuPage River. So, we have several ways that we can make that connection, Norman Town being one of the preferred alternates in this corridor. You'll see right next to that, another corridor which is labeled number one, that's a corridor that is following the DuPage River, we're all familiar with the DuPage River, we're working with the city of Naperville and the Naperville Park District right now on projects up in that area, as well as the Village of Shorewood and the city of Joliet in the southern end of the corridor. And then, a little bit further to the east of that is corridor number three, that's Weber Road. Romeo Ville is very interested in making linkages for their community up and down Weber Road, and you kind of move across the county that way. Let me switch maps here. So, I'm going to a map that we refer to as a regional map. So, the regional map just takes this down one step for you, and it shows you this north-western corner of the county, it stretches from roughly Route 53, maybe getting closer on the right-hand side of the map, out to the county line on the left-hand side of the map. The Norman Town Trail is highlighted there in yellow or orange, depending on how you see that, and you can see several of the open spaces shown in green as well. Now, open space isn't just forest preserve space, that's also our public schools, that's our local parks, local municipal parks as well. And then you'll see some brown lines all over the page, both dashed and solid. Solid lines are existing bike way corridors, or bike way improvements that are in place. Dashed lines are lines that we obtained from your local plans, as well as some of the other entities around you, some of the other municipalities and park districts. So, you can see how this trail, following- So you can see how this trail, following Old Norman Town Road, it does parallel some of the, those existing brown lines. However, we've, we know that redundancy as well as choice is important in pedestrian and bicyclist networks. Just as you'd see somebody who's very comfortable riding his bicycle in a 40 mile an hour street, and he's all suited up and he's ready to go, we also know that there's 10 and 12-year-olds and people with strollers and the rest that aren't comfortable in that kind of a situation, but still want to get from here to there. They still want to come to downtown Plainfield. They still want to move up, see their open spaces, maybe visit their friends in another subdivision. So the Norman Town Trail was actually first conceived back in the mid 2000s. The city of Naperville was working with a local developer called MACOM Corporation, who was building a series of subdivisions along 248th, which were called Ashwood. Everything was Ashwood. Ashwood Point, Ashwood this, Ashwood that. And so we just kind of commonly referred to it as Ashwood. But as part of those discussions between the city of Naperville and the developer and the Forest Preserve District, because we had two land holdings adjacent to those Ashwood subdivisions, it was determined that the city of Naperville did not want to pursue the upgrade and development and maintenance of Norman Town Road. They instead chose to put all of their eggs into the 248th Street basket, looking at instead using the right-of-way of the former Norman Town Road to be converted as open space to provide a buffer to the Ashwood subdivisions and also to provide this transportation corridor linking what would eventually be Wolf's Crossing down into the Village of Plainfield. We've talked with the, with the folks in the Village of Plainfield back then, and we've continued to talk about the Norman Town Trail. And all of us have, whether formally in plans or informally in discussions and planning documents, have included the Norman Town Trail as part of our planning documents. What's unique about this situation in particular is that while Naperville was able to vacate the roadway and transfer the roadway to the developer, and then the developer transferred the property to the Forest Preserve District, there was a situation here in Plainfield where there was a, a existing single-family dwelling, actually it was a farmstead, that lied on the west side of the CN tracks and was only accessible via Norman Town Road. So as we progressed, it became obvious that the village was not going to be able to vacate the roadway. We could not, we could not strand these folks. We couldn't landlock them. And so the village instead allowed the roadway to remain open from 119th Street north to a property that we have just south of 111th called Wolf's Crossing, or I'm sorry, Wolf Creek Preserve. And so recent events or recent developments, that single-family dwelling is no longer there. The access across the CN tracks is no longer necessary, although it has been used recently in the, in the recent pipeline upgrade projects. And we allowed the pipeline company, you know, full access back and forth. They did have an agreement with the Forest Preserve District as well as the village to make those improvements. But now comes an opportunity for us to actually complete the conversion of the Norman Town Road right-of-way from 119th north to Wolf's Crossing and make a two-mile-long off-road trail, multi-use trail, paved trail for access, to access all of those subdivisions, but also to access important connections like the Tall Grass Greenway, which is located near Vermont Cemetery at the upper end of that yellow line. And if you follow that, that line of the Tall Grass Greenway directly to the east and you kind of keep moving, you're gonna hit Naperville Plainfield Road. You go up Naperville Plainfield Road. You go down 95th Street and bang, you're on the DuPage River and you're in downtown Naperville in a couple of miles, in a few miles. And you're also at Wallen Lake Forest Preserve. We're able to connect to the Riverview Farmstead Forest Preserve. So from our perspective, it's connecting these open spaces, connecting people, connecting the schools like Niqua Valley, which is along that, that line as well on the Tall Grass Greenway, and really starting to bring a network of off-street trails to this corner of the, of the, of the county. We also know that working together is the only way that we ever get anything done. The Forest Preserve District routinely works with local municipalities and park districts across the county. In fact, I don't think there's a single trail that we built without a partner. And so I'm asking tonight too for you to consider being a partner with the Forest Preserve District. We are not requesting that you vacate the right, the right-of-way. We are not asking you to turn the right-of-way over to the Forest Preserve District. We're asking you to continue to own the right-of-way. What we are asking you to do is to close the road, Norman Town Road, to vehicular traffic. And I'm gonna switch to just one more slide here real quick. So this is the last slide that you have, and this is really that highlight on the Norman Town Trail. So we're asking you to, again, close that portion of the roadway north of 119th north to our Wolf's Crossing or Wolf Creek Preserve, which will allow us to build that trail from 119th north to Vermont Cemetery and eventually to Wolf's Crossing. North of 111th, we're working with the developers on the conversion of the roadway right-of-way and the roadway network. They're actually building a trail on portions of that, and we've done a conversion similar to what we're going to propose to you tonight in the northern portion. So between that portion north of 119th, there's a little cross-section up on the right-hand side of your map that shows what that typical cross-section would look like. We would shave back the sides of the roadway, and we would create a 10 to 12-foot-wide asphalt surface path accessible from 119th as well as Rockwell, which intersects with Norman Town Road right now. And then it would also intersect with 111th and then with trail networks at Wolf Creek Preserve and Vermont Cemetery Preserve. South of 119th, we still need to maintain vehicular traffic. The Forest Preserve District would work with the Plainfield Park District and the Village of Plainfield to come up with some appropriate signage, but it's really what we call a share-the-road scenario. It's a low-grade street. It's not a through street. It does connect into a couple of subdivisions, and more importantly for us, it connects to the Plainfield Equestrian Center. And eventually to a trail that links us to 135th Street, which opens up all kinds of opportunities for people who will travel along that route. And then once you hit 127th Street, the trail cross-section would change again, or I'm sorry, the Naperville, the, the Plainfield Equestrian Center, the trail cross-section would change again, and that's an existing trail that's there along, connecting down to 135th Street. So that's the Norman Town Trail in a nutshell. As Brian indicated, we have met with village officials. We've met with the fire chief as well and park district officials to talk about how we can make this work. The Forest Preserve District is willing to commit the funds to make the trail north of 100, to make it a trail north of 119th, and will make the appropriate, or take the appropriate considerations that the fire department has asked us to, which are primarily to still allow emergency vehicles access from 119th as well as from Rockwell Lane. So the, so there'll be bollards there that restrict most traffic, but emergency vehicles would still have access. And we've done that in other places as well. So we've put together a draft of an agreement, which I'm sure Brian will bring forward to you at, at an appropriate time for further consideration.
To pick up on where Ralph is with this, what we would likely do if the board is comfortable with us going forward with a plan like this is, obviously, there are some, there is a subdivision north of 119th that has a side street called Rockwell that does come over there. If the board is interested in having us pursue this, and then what we will do is schedule to have some meetings with the homeowners that live in that neighborhood to get their feedback and their input as well as, as Ralph mentioned, Mr. Sabadash, who's on the other side of the train tracks where the house burned down, we'd want to have a dialogue with him as well just to make sure that all the parties that once, or are currently using that road, understand where we're at, and we can get their understanding as well. Just to let the rest of the board know, this, this is something that we know has been on the books for consideration for quite some time. In fact, we are trying to figure out how long it has been under consideration, but certainly every bit of 10 to 15 years has been, this has been envisioned. So we're pretty excited to have this possibility move forward, but of course, that, that means that we want to make sure that the board's comfortable with us moving forward with it at this point, and then we'll have those meetings with the homeowners and the affected property owners.
Brian, as long as we have support of the community in that area, I have absolutely no problem, you know, looking into this further. I do ask that we look and check with our insurance carriers and see if there's gonna be any major difference in our rates. I'd imagine there probably won't be, but it won't hurt to, to check if we're gonna be, you know, turning that into a side path. And it sounds great. I'd like to hear more. Thank you.
I agree with Garrett on this issue. I think its interconnectivity is, is key. And I think it has been for the last couple strategic planning meetings. People have talked about the, the bike trails and trying to connect with other towns and to make travel easier. I know a couple of friends of mine actually run marathons and they train, but now they're running through subdivisions and begging for these paths to, to interconnect. So they have a different route to run every day, and I think it's good for the community. One question I do have, if we were to go ahead with this program, you said you're working with Naperville as well. Would they finish about the same time, or is, would we go first, or would Naperville go first, or would all be one big, large project at once? It would likely, we're tied to the developers' completion timelines on that portion north of 111th. So we have developed a portion of it to this, from our Vermont Cemetery, about a, about a quarter of a mile, a third of a mile to the south. The developer immediately north of 111th is moving a little bit faster than the developer right in the middle. So that's the one segment that's still missing. So we control, between the village and the forest preserve, we control all of the right-of-way between 111th and 119th. So our timeline is our timeline. And that portion to the north in Naperville, again, I, I'm gonna guess it's still probably a couple of two, three years away. The plans are in place, but the developer doesn't have to build the trail until he's building houses. So.
From my perspective, I think the path forward is an excellent one. I think talking to the community's impacted us. We need to do that. I'd also have to take a look at what happens to the budget. We have to find a way of putting the money, if we're gonna be partners, and it's gonna cost us something, I suspect, and we need to make sure that's integrated into the budget.
Actually, this is one of my favorite budget items. It's zero for the village. This is entirely a project that would be paid for 100% by the Forest Preserve.
Great. Partnership that we benefit from.
You have the land, we have the money, I guess, in this case.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I lived elsewhere for many, many years, 50 years on the East Coast, basically. And I don't think people in Illinois truly appreciate the advantages that people have here. There's some long bike paths. I love to, you know, ride 15, 20 miles off the roads. I don't like to ride on the roads, but, and we have the opportunity to do that. Back east is impossible. It's just, but it's a great asset, and we continue to develop and nurture it. I'd love to have Plainfield one that I could ride for a couple hours on. We're not there yet, but this is progress, so I hope we move ahead on this. It'd be an excellent idea.
I like the idea of connecting. I think it's, it's, it's the whole, the whole thing even with where the riverfront is trying to connect different paths in different directions. And you mentioned all the way to Naperville and to their riverfront and all the different things there, so if we can make it work, why not?
Try to get you to Shorewood and their riverfront, because they're working on a plan two.
There we go.
I think it's obviously very positive. I know it's high on the list. We see it time and time again from residents looking for that connectivity for the bike, walking trails, those kinds of things. So I think that's, that's great, and knowing that there's, I guess, as you described, different ways to connect those paths or create those. I guess I would defer maybe a little bit before jumping all in to see what the residents' input was along that road in there to see if they have concerns or not, because I think even if that road were to stay open, I still think it could create that connectivity of that corridor, maybe not as ideally being a, a closed path, but it would still allow that access point. Am I correct?
It would, and much like the area to the south of 119th. And here's where I guess I'll be a little self-serving. We have a lot of dumping issues and a lot of cut-throughs of people coming up from 119th, and they hit Wolf, Wolf Creek Preserve. And what happens is there's a path there, so they duck into a park and drive along a path up to 111th Street. And we've blocked that, and then they dumped some garbage there, and then we'll pick up the garbage. And we, we, so we deal with this kind of issue constantly. Some of the folks on the northern end, I'm just suspecting because of the calls we get, would welcome this. I don't know about those who might use Rockwell to come into the subdivision. They might have a little bit more of an issue.
Can you just answer, I guess briefly, you mentioned in your presentation that you didn't want to take ownership of the property. Is there a specific reason why you do not want that?
The legal mechanism that the village would have would be to vacate the roadway. If the village vacated the roadway, it goes to the adjacent property owners. We're not one of them. So all of the homeowners along Norman Town Road would each get a piece of that as well as the Canadian National. And so the right-of-way would essentially be lost.
I guess one last question, I guess maybe goes back to a prior conversation we had about annexation agreements and changing driveways. So that's kind of what we're proposing in this situation as well, correct?
With this one, what we're looking at doing is vacating a, possibly vacating a public road. But you're right, it, there are some other legal questions that we, we've been approaching. We'd like to say it's as clean as the proposal that Ralph had presented, but we've, we've come into some legal issues. And the, the point that you're raising, we had to pull out the annexation agreement and take a look to see what was part of that annexation agreement. There are some challenges that we've got to work through on that. Yep. Are there any other comments?
Just one minor one. Your, your presentation, Ralph, was excellent. It, you know, with the maps, all of the, the concentration, it really enlightens an awful lot of people of what, what is being planned, what is done, and what obviously is going to be the future. You know, I like to just give a little credit to, I, I call it remarkable Plainfield for intergovernmental cooperation with the Will County Forest Preserve. I, I can only draw on some areas that I see. The tremendous numbers. We don't have a toll booth. We don't have a counter on the streets. But I just, when I go down, up and down Van Dyke Road often, because I live in the back here, the numbers of people that are using our facilities and our trails is really tremendous. And this is only going to enhance our area further. Not only is it, you know, attractive, but it's financially agreeable for people who are residents here, because it increases their property value. It increases, as I say, the desirability of our community. And this is a wonderful plan, and I certainly hope we go forward with it. And thanks for the financing.
Sure. No problem.
No problem.
Well, Ralph, thank you very much for coming in, and unless there are any other questions.
The next item on the agenda is food truck policy.
Thank you. So this topic has come back to, to the village board for some informal discussion and some direction. I know the board has taken up the topic of food trucks, whether generically in terms of how the, how they would be regulated in the village or with respect to a specific proposal, whether it's from a hot dog truck. I recall a young entrepreneur who was looking for approval to start a, a hot dog business, a number of specific proposals. So the village board has had an opportunity to kind of weigh in. So the village board has had an opportunity to kind of weigh in, again, specifically with regard to an individual proposal. And as well, kind of to develop a general informal policy. It's not a written resolution that we have, you know, on file, but it's an informal policy that staff uses as a guide when the requests do come in from time to time. And I know more recently, we had a request that was a little bit different from some of the previous ones and that the proposed food truck operation would be essentially stationary for the majority of the time. So, this evening's discussion is not necessarily specific to that proposal, but just allows further opportunity for the village board to evaluate whether our current approach of having an informal policy is appropriate. We could fine-tune that informal policy with some additional details and direction to staff. Or whether the board is interested in pursuing some more formalized zoning regulations. That could be something as simple as addressing the use of food trucks, food trucks as a land use in the zoning code. It could be done, you know, by right or with a special use permit. We could limit food truck operations to certain zoning districts as we do with other types of uses. Or going more fully down the regulatory path towards a permitting and/or inspection approach. So staff's outlined a number of possibilities here in a memo to the board. All the items aren't necessarily recommendations, they're simply tools or approaches that we could pursue to implement and address certain concerns or considerations depending on the nature of the discussion that we have here this evening. Just for very brief context, if I can editorialize a little bit or provide some additional context. As the board is well aware, you know, food trucks have really become commonplace. They've become something of a chic amenity at special events. There's a certain cachet to some of the food trucks that offer a specialty item or a gourmet item that maybe isn't available on a day-in, day-out basis in every town. So, they're quite popular from the standpoint of the public. There's a certain anticipation or expectation, I think, for people when they go to a special event, especially in a location that isn't in a downtown setting or a location where there are existing restaurants available, that, you know, a food option certainly can be included in a special event by way of food trucks. We do have a number of food trucks that visit the village frequently. I know our library district has a kind of a popular food truck outing several times a month. We have some private businesses that incorporate food trucks in their marketing and promotions and special events. And even here at Village Hall, we incorporate food trucks from time to time in certain events that we're involved in, whether at the village or in partnership with the library. So, from staff's perspective, food trucks are definitely a positive if they can be addressed in a manner that's fair and equitable to all parties involved. They're certainly popular. And to staff's understanding at least, we haven't encountered a significant issue with the application of our policy to date. So, while we have had food trucks in the village for a number of years, staff's not aware of any significant issue, whether it be by way of public health associated with the food truck operation, by way of impacts to existing businesses, parking, traffic, circulation, that type of thing. So, in general, staff feels that, you know, food trucks have made their way into the village successfully and without necessarily the need for significant additional regulation. But having said that, as the requests and the proposals become either more frequent or more specific and what's being requested, there certainly is an opportunity to take that next step from our current kind of informal policy, which I could reiterate, I should have noted at the outset. The village currently identifies food trucks would be permitted on private property with a property owner's consent. And I think the understanding would be that the food truck operation would be for, you know, a short period of time associated with a special event. So, there are some specifics in the memo here in terms of how food trucks could be regulated, could be identified in the zoning code, allowed in, for example, commercial or industrial zoning districts, allowed at locations where there is an existing principal use. So in other words, a food truck wouldn't be permitted on a vacant lot as one potential zoning approach to going so far as requiring a permit for a host location in addition to evaluating the permit status of the food trucks themselves. So it kind of runs the gamut. I think as the, you know, board discusses, you know, staff will be interested to get the direction. And I believe there are at least a few folks here who would like an opportunity to be part of that discussion. And the ultimate outcome may be that the status quo is appropriate. It may be that there is a desire for a full, formal zoning and permitting process or somewhere in the middle where there's just some fine-tuning and some modification. So, that's really the table setting here, and staff welcomes a further discussion from the board. Thanks.
All right. I'll jump right in. I did look up other communities. I did, excuse me, check on some things. There's actually a website for mobile trucks that, you know, looked up there. The concept of the mobile truck, the specialty truck, in my opinion, is fine. I think it needs, I think the spirit of the truck is to move. And that's where, if you want to call it a hang-up, that's where my hang-up is on this. I really think they, when they move around to different events, you mentioned the library's done several things. I know a couple of the property owners that host events at their facility have had them there. You know, Plainfield Fest, we've, you know, known several of those groups that have come out and used those. I think the spirit of it is it needs to move, not be a stationary add-on. And I'm still on that spot. I don't think that that's the right direction that we should be moving. And as far as special use or whatever, possibly, maybe that is, you know, another piece that needs to be added in. I mean, we've had other things on special use that are a lot less impacting, I would think. So I just think that that's where I'm starting the conversation, if anyone else wants to jump in. But I just, the spirit is to move around and not to be on one piece of property.
I'll jump in. I'm not really sure about going on about the spirit of the food truck or what it should do or shouldn't do. But my thought process is that we should encourage entrepreneurs, but at the same time, allow a free market without an unfair advantage. And I think it was brought up by another trustee that other existing businesses are paying property taxes at their location. And in my opinion, if somebody was allowed to put a food truck in front of my business where I'm paying property taxes and licenses, then sell similar products or the same product for less and take my customers, I wouldn't be too happy. On the other side of it, I do want to encourage business owners to be able to find a way to make a living that's outside the box. Maybe someone that doesn't have enough money to purchase or lease a building and encourage that commerce in our community. So, I guess henceforth, then, I'd like to see us move forward at looking at something like, staff has presented, maybe the Village of Schaumburg, or you have another one from Raleigh, South Carolina. I would like to see some sort of zoning or special use for this and find some sort of a win-win situation here where we're not going to have an existing business angry with us for allowing somebody to put a food truck directly in front of their building. And I don't want to use the word parasite, but I won't just pick off their customers. But at the same time, I would like to see, for example, if a large industrial company that we have would want a food truck in their parking lot for a few hours a day during lunch. Their employees don't have to drive as far. They can go out in the parking lot and get their eats and then go back to work or sit in their car, take a nap for a half hour, then go back to work. That'd be great. So I'd like to see something in the middle. What I have seen in other communities that I dislike would be a vacant lot with a food truck that's there 24/7, and then half a block later, another food truck that competes with that one. And then we have food trucks all along a strip. And I have seen it in another community, and that's not my vision for Plainfield. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
My perspective is that I want to make sure that it's safe. And you said that there's been no problem with sanitation or anything else in the food trucks we've had. But I'd like to find a way to make sure that whatever food trucks we have meet standard county codes for health and so on, disposal of grease and other stuff like that. So as long as we can do that, I'm not quite as hung up on the idea they have to move all the time. Are they not taxed at all? Food truck is not, some places not part of the property assessment?
As I understand, they do have to pay sales tax and licenses and fees. But as far as the unit itself, it wouldn't be, it would be a registered vehicle, so it wouldn't be hit with property taxes.
I think it's only to get the sales tax out of it, so that's... And the cost of a truck from paperwork we got was like eighty-five thousand dollars. So it's not a huge amount for tax purposes on property taxes. Be nice if it moved around. There's an example, I used to visit Edward Hospital, you know, the cancer center over there, and there was no food, no cafeteria, there was nothing over at Edwards. And a food truck coming by would be nice. You can call, you know, over on 59 and have somebody deliver something, but there's a lot of people work there that's inconvenient. So a food truck, you know, moving there periodically might be something that they would want. Certainly the people we talked to, nurses, so I would say, hey, we'd love to have something like that here. I think the idea of standardizing distances and that sort of thing, I think that would be beneficial. I think one of your codes suggested that. I think that makes it for a fair playing field. Then I think I agree with trustee Peck around the entrepreneurs, give them a chance to make some money. If you provide a service the community wants, go for it. I'm not adverse to that at all. But I think we need to make sure the public health is preserved and that can be standardized, permits and so on. Right now, they come in without permits, right? We don't have any permits that they...
I guess one last question, I guess maybe it goes back to a prior conversation we had about annexation agreements and changing driveways. So that's kind of what we're proposing in this situation as well, correct?
People that come for our fests and so on, library and all that, we don't know anything about them, really. I think we ought to know something about if they're going to be here. At least provide some opportunity for regulation or input if we need to. I'd like to see some, do something structured-wise, be a little bit flexible, kind of encourage businesses. But, you know, the idea of protecting other businesses nearby, I think you can do that by the distances that are recommended, a hundred feet from the food truck to the front entrance of a competing-type thing. I think that's probably adequate. The one thing we've done well so far is that you can't park it on private property unless you have the owner's permission. And as far as I'm concerned, if you got the owner's permission, we ought to, as long as it reaches other criteria for fairness, we ought to accommodate that. So, I think that's one thing we did insist upon. I remember the discussion we had there, you can't just park it on the street wherever you want. Somebody's got to approve it. And in fact, if somebody does approve it, I think we ought to seriously acknowledge that, if you will.
Phil, just one quick thing. I just want to clarify one thing on the health thing. The Will County Health Department is extremely diligent. So, just, I don't want anyone to worry about the food trucks that typically are out there, especially for the fests, because they come around and they are very, very strict. I mean, they've even, they even come through the vendors that'll sell candy at the craft show. So, just so the public understands that, the Will County Department of Health is extremely diligent on that.
Okay, great.
And I need to correct myself. I said Raleigh, South Carolina. That would be in North Carolina. My bad. One other point of clarification with staff, I think I requested this when we had the hot dog truck that was at Mobile on Route 30, just shy of Route 55. I had asked that they have their business register their IBT with the state of Illinois in Plainfield, so we capture the home rule sales tax.
Unfortunately, that's not in our corporate limits.
Right. But they were wanting to come into the village, I think, and have other locations, and that was the caveat that I was interested in. So, if we were to look at some sort of a permitting process, I would like to see the business, and a business can get several different IBT numbers if I'm not mistaken, but I would like to see that business that's operating in the village be charging sales tax that does, you know, fall within our home rules, so we do capture that sales tax. If they're sitting, if they have permission from, let's say, Diageo, I would like to see our home rule sales tax come to us from those sales within the village limits. And I know it's not a real easy thing to do, but it's not too difficult either. Thank you.
John, I want to thank you for the memo and the work you put into this. Point by point through it, I mean, I think the key is to establish the definition of what a food truck is and what we would like to see in the village. Ultimately, it's up to the decision of what is a food truck. That was the hang-up I had with the group that was here last, is what is a food truck? We need to know for the definitions, so we can set the zoning or the permitting approach. And I do believe we should go in that direction. It's important to say what districts or what zoning districts it's allowed into, rather than just private property. You can park that in a subdivision in somebody's driveway at this point, correct?
Great. So, yeah, as our policy's been applied, and there are some nuances to food trucks and some different categories. Everything from an ice cream truck, and I think many people on the board, I don't want to take all of your perspectives for granted, but I think that the general public would feel that an ice cream truck coming through a residential neighborhood would be, you know, acceptable. So to categorize something that's intentionally roving, for lack of a more refined term, versus a food truck that's by definition mobile but parks for a duration, you know, almost scheduled. So, certainly staff believes it would be appropriate to limit food trucks that park or have a scheduled, you know, scheduled special events to commercial or industrial zoning districts, other than perhaps, and we had a discussion about this kind of offline, if there were a special event, you know, a family, a wedding, a picnic, something like that, where a food truck maybe would be a fun amenity to that, and that might be subject to our open-air gathering permit or there might be another trigger that says, yes, under certain circumstances, it could be allowed in a residential zoning district. But in general, yes, staff would submit that a commercial, i.e. a B3 or a B5 zoning district or an industrial zoning district would be an appropriate limitation for food trucks.
That would all go with the permitting process of, say, it was a block party or, and the people in the subdivision wanted the food truck there, they could apply for it and we could give a special use.
As a special event, or, correct? Yes.
Okay. And then to trustee Bonucci's point, I think it's important that we address how long the food truck can be at a certain point. And I think that will be addressed in the definition of the food truck. And the permits, I guess that we'd all have to discuss on what type of permits that you'd like to see, such as the special use permits and then the food truck differentiating from the ice cream truck. And again, it all goes back to the definition of what is a food truck.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, or just kind of informally to continue the discussion. I think implementing some definitions and regulations in the zoning code would be the most painless way of trying to take a step into regulation, because it provides some clarity, it provides some certainty, but it doesn't put any additional obligation on the part of the operators. I can give some just informal feedback that, from the food truck perspective, if they have two hundred, three hundred events in a year or more in forty, fifty, sixty towns, it can get complicated for them, and it can also frankly get expensive if they have to get a permit in each town. And I know that's not the trustee's main priority is to address the economics for the operator, but I'm just... Operational considerations on the part of the food truck operator. So, any additional clarity, any zoning we can implement in zoning code is, ideally, would not be onerous on the part of a food truck operator to take the next step and either require a business license or a permit that has a fee associated with it, could potentially be a deterrent, and it might be a worthwhile deterrent because it helps us, you know, establish their health department permitting status or it helps us with the taxation number, not trying to discourage us from going down that path, but from a day-in, day-out, operational, putting the issue in practice standpoint, just trying to clarify some feedback, or not clarify, but convey some feedback that I've heard that if we go a full-blown kind of permitting route, all the way from the informal policy, include the zoning, but take that next step in permitting, that it could potentially be a deterrent or, you know, limit the pool of food truck operators who are interested or find it viable to come to the village of Plainfield.
One other thing, have we checked with the Chamber of Commerce, had a friend or input on what they feel?
Would you feel it might be a good idea for staff also to get a little more granular with the definition of food truck, to address the idea that somebody might actually have a trailer that's not motorized, that they try to drop for three hours or whatnot within that timeframe, and actually define what, and get more granular and say it needs to be motorized, or it doesn't? If we don't say it and cover it, I think someone will do it, personally, speaking from someone that, you know, thinks outside the box. So I don't know if maybe staff can also look at that as well and make sure we cover our bases, if somebody actually has a trailer that's not motorized, and how we're going to handle that in permitting.
So I'd encourage staff to try to put something together, and we don't want to be onerous, you're absolutely right, and I think we need to try to incorporate the ideas we have. You did that very effectively when we did the streetscape along Lockport Street, and people eating outside. We, you know, came up with guidelines exactly how they could do it, and once we established that, it worked very well. They can only have certain space, make sure people walk by. We can probably do something similar with the thought process that worked there, see if we can't come up with something here, so.
Let's see, regarding the chamber, I actually called Tasha just to kind of give her a heads-up that this was going to be on the agenda. She made some comments, but I don't think it would be appropriate for me to relay those. I expressed that she might, you know, have better interest in talking directly to Jonathan and expressing her likes or dislikes of this subject, but I just wanted to let her know that the topic was a part of our discussion. While I certainly support free markets, support entrepreneurship, I think in this position, obviously, a big thing that I need to do is support the existing businesses who are already invested in our community. The challenge for me with any of this is the one piece we talk about, which is fair and equitable business environment. And I'm not sure how we create that, and until we really can, I'm not sure that I would be able to support it. The challenge that I have is, no matter where, I mean, we live in the suburbs, people drive, so even if you put a food truck where somebody says is away from some areas, you're still taking people away from a visit maybe to a local restaurant, which is going to affect existing businesses. And again, I think it's kind of what people describe as the share of the stomach. So at that time of day, with those people in the general area, they're looking to eat. If it ends up being a food truck as a choice, then maybe they don't go to the local restaurant. And I think that's ultimately going to affect businesses. I think really where this works very well is more urban environments, and we have 20, 30,000 people within a half a mile radius, their densities are off the charts. We have 40,000 roughly within our municipal boundary. So suburbs, people are going to drive, they're going to get delivery, they're being served, I think, by the existing base. Do I think special events, Plainfield Fest, those kinds of things, where unique items are sold, the ice cream truck as an example, I think certainly that works. I think the challenge there is, again, defining what those items look like, what those events are. And then Jonathan, you mentioned it at the end there. So for me, maybe adding more clauses as a deterrent would be okay.
You know, basically, I have no, I find no flaw in any comment that any trustee made this evening. I think they're all rational, reasonable, and I just want to caution everybody, unless we have regulations, we're going to have confusion. No one spoke of traffic. Where, if you have a food truck in, I'm not going to talk about any particular corner, but there are intersections, but there are so many intersections in Plainfield that have problems. Are we going to add to that congestion? Another thing that disturbs me, if we open up the total concept to food trucks without regulations, strict regulations, we're going to have an invasion from other communities that come in and dump a truck down in a vacant property for two to three hours, and then take off until someone perhaps produces a difficulty for them. I think food trucks are fun, and, you know, if you look about the Rags the Riches story, think about Portillo's. He started out in a food truck, and he sold it for $1 billion. I think that's a little bit of an extrapolation, but yet. Food trucks, you know, the entrepreneurial venture, as trustee Peck had mentioned, is always strong in this country, and it is a strength. But we, I'm just saying one very basic thing, we need regulations, and it has to be discussed. For example, do we have any guidelines on what they look like? It was alluded to for a moment, and I was thinking, are you going to take and make a food truck out of a converted camper? Well, I don't think that's such a hot idea. I don't think it's great for the Village of Plainfield to have that particular image. We have to have regulations, because if, without regulations, it's unfair, not only on the village administration, it's unfair on our regulatory administration through the police department. So without further to do, I'm saying, if we're going to continue and to continue discussing this, we need the basic thing, we need regulations, a guideline that will apply across the board. Not, oh, yeah, come in and you can have your food truck. Nope, it has to be done properly. And so remember, I, well, I'm tired of saying it, but I'm going to say it, decisions made in haste, you live with in leisure. Let's not make a hasty decision and say, yeah, this is a great idea, open it up right away. No. We have to think about it, and think about all the points that were brought up by our various trustees, our administration, Jonathan, and the community. It's very important to take a universal image and make it a good product. Thank you.
I was just going to say, there's been a lot of lively discussion on this, but I think the number one thing is, do we have the consensus that we should go forward with this and develop the definitions and such like this, so that we can create an ordinance? Is there enough, is there enough support on the Board? Okay, well, I think that's the start, but also, I just wrote down the definition of food truck, the zoning, the locations, and what permits and such that we have to have. Is there anything else other than that, that the trustees would like input on, of what we created? And for the people that are interested in it out there for the food trucks, government moves very slowly, as you can well see. So if there's other things, let's try to get them out now and move forward, so that we're not coming back, well, we covered these five things, but now we need seven more. So if there's other things that the trustees would like to put input, Mr. Jonathan will, you know, make note of.
I'm sure our liquor ordinance already does not allow it, but I would like the ordinance to say there's not going to be any alcohol sales allowed on any food truck. Thank you.
I would look for maybe clearer definition on special events, and we talked about, I think, unique items. I don't know how we would define a unique item.
Also to include those special permits for subdivisions and community events.
I would defer from my point, I'd like Jonathan to put his expertise to work in figuring out what we missed. He's been looking at a lot of these other things, he probably had an idea in mind, but if we haven't picked up something, please submit it, what you think is appropriate. So you've got a better handle, I think, than we do, although we obviously have to make the ultimate decision, but we count on your input, which is a very important part of what we do, so.
Okay. I think we have a good start, and we'll come back again with a future committee of the whole to talk of the items that John and the staff put together.
So for the audience, there is, there is interest, we're going to start the process, but it'll be a little bit, just so you know.
Reminders?
Reminders, July 13th is Coffee with the Mayor, the 14th is Historic Preservation Commission, the 18th will be a Village Board meeting, the 19th is a Planning Commission, and our next committee of the whole will be July 25th.
We're seeking a motion to adjourn to executive session as permitted under the Open Meetings Act under Section 2C1, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees or legal counsel not to reconvene.
Moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.